And now we're starting the webinar. Good morning, everybody. We will get started in just a few minutes. Good morning, everybody. We will get started in just a few minutes. Just allowing everybody to get settled into the Zoom webinar space. All right, Madam Chair, you can get started whenever you like.
Terrific. Thank you, Randy, so much. Well, I want to welcome everybody to this public hearing, which is the first one of four that we are conducting to gather input regarding the proposed integration plans that will come to the Board of Governors for consideration next month. Let me just remind everybody that the whole purpose, the intent behind these integrations is to expand opportunities for students in the Commonwealth to help us preserve the rich on-campus experiences that our 14 universities provide, all the while expanding our reach to better serve new students who seek a different path. Our current and future students need to know that we are committed to these institutions and to finding the best solutions to ensure that they are able to thrive for centuries to come. And at the end of the day, integration is based on the premise that these universities can do more together than they can ever do alone. And so we're here to gather input as part of our inclusive and transparent effort to review the plans, which were developed with the help of more than 1,000 students, faculty, and staff. And I want to thank everyone who contributed to the plans and everyone who was offering comments to help us make the plans be the best that they can. I want you to know that I have already reviewed the first batch of public comments. I have literally read every single one. They're also posted online, and I'm really grateful to everyone who is engaging in this effort. I really do believe that all of this feedback will result in stronger plans. And as Chair of the Board of Governors, I also want to acknowledge my fellow board members who are watching on Zoom or YouTube. This is not a board meeting, so there will be no roll call and, of course, no votes taken today. I'll remind our board members that we are not here to engage in discussion with each other or with those offering comments. Anything like that would really detract from people's time to share their viewpoints, because that is what we're here for today. So our role in this hearing is to listen to the comments and to consider how they might inform our decision-making. All right, so to get us started, I'm going to go back over to Randy to share logistical information. Randy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everybody. Just so you know, we are recording these hearings, and we'll archive them on our YouTube channel for everyone to view live right now, but also later, and so that we can include these comments among those that we are already collecting through email, the website, and through other means. All comments, as Cindy said, are being reviewed in an ongoing basis by the integrations teams so that we can identify actionable items that could be incorporated into the plans. The teams are also identifying any actionable items that may not necessarily affect the plans per se, but could inform other documents, or processes, or other future implementation efforts. The raw comments, as Cindy said, are being shared with all board members and are being uploaded in batches to our public website, so everyone can see them. Later, in July, we will provide the public and the board with an updated set of plans, along with a guide that shows where the changes to the plans were made, based on the public comments that we've received and will continue to receive through June. So regarding these hearings today and tomorrow, while each of them is officially designated for either the East or the West, please know that we are happy to hear comments on either or both plans at all of the hearings. We want to make sure that they are as flexible to you and to the public as possible, so if you have comments on either or both, feel free to share them in any of the hearings. So some logistics for today. We will ask that speakers limit their comments to no more than two, at the most, three minutes, out of respect for those who may want to offer comments. Around the two-minute mark, if your comments are still going, we will pop up a counter on the screen, which will count down a final minute to that three-minute mark, and we would ask you to respect that as much as you can. With that, we will now begin the hearings and the comments, and we'll start with those members who pre-registered on our website, and then we'll move on to anybody else who wants to make a comment. So the first person I have pre-registered is Holliday Adair. And Holliday, if you're in the room, go ahead and click Raise Hand, and then I'll name the people who are pre-registered now, so you can raise your hand, and then I'll activate your button in order. But Holliday, and then we'll have Mark Stenka, Elizabeth Joyce, Laura Tornaman, forgive me if I missed your last name, Kate Canazie, Jocelyn Looney, Ty Marks, Sheila Woger, and Margaret Irvin. So if you can raise your hands, and I'll activate you in the order in which we called you. And when I activate you, you can turn on your microphone, and if you like, you can also turn on your video. So we'll start with Holliday. And are you able to turn on your video or not?
I don't see a button for it.
Hold on, let me do this. I'm going to promote you to panelist. That should allow you to do it. See if that worked. Yeah, perfect. All right.
See and hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So my name is Holliday Adair, and I work at Cal U. I oppose the integration, and I ask you to vote against it. The West plan indicates that classes in the major will be offered face-to-face, online, and remotely. Students really struggled with remote courses these last three terms. Grades in the classes that I usually teach were statistically significantly lower, the classes were stat classes, than previous face-to-face terms. Students kept telling me they just could not learn this way. Despite my numerous outreach efforts, I felt that I had lost them, and in more than intellectual ways. I posted the link to the Western plan on Facebook and tagged about 40 alumni with whom I keep in touch. They are concerned that the speed of the plan will ensure its failure. They said things like, who wants online courses after this year? And I really dislike the speed with which they feel like they can roll these changes out, and there's no specific details. In addition to the negative impact on students, faculty and staff are feeling a significant burden by being expected to present a supportive face on the creation of the plan while privately languishing over their ability to see how, in an integrated institution with three very distant campuses, they can continue to offer excellence in teaching and mentoring. On more than one survey, students reported friendliness as one of the characteristics they prize most about their experience at Cal U. With the possible physical and electronic distancing of up to 2/3 of the students we will be teaching, I think students will no longer experience us as friendly or supportive. In conclusion, I oppose the integration because it will negatively impact our mission of providing excellent teaching to students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Holliday. Next, we'll go to Mark. And Mark will promote you as panelist, so that you can activate your audio video if you'd like.
Morning. All right. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak this morning. I'm Mark Stenka, 2010 graduate of California University of Pennsylvania and a current grad student at East Stroudsburg University of Pennsylvania. I will start by saying that without the state system of higher education, I would not have the education and opportunities I've been afforded throughout my career. The most important aspect of this is my ability to have attained an undergraduate degree and now a master's degree without accruing any debt. If it wasn't for the state schools, this wouldn't be possible. I'm a huge proponent of public education. My father was a public school teacher. I attended a public grade school. I chose public education for undergraduate and master's degree, for an undergraduate and a master's degree. But what has been allowed to happen to higher education here in the Commonwealth and the dire situation the state system finds itself in is appalling. We could play the blame game all day. Governors, General Assembly, blame the university presidents, Board of Trustees, blame the PASC, the unions. We could play the blame game all day, but it has to stop. I applaud the chancellor for coming here to the Commonwealth over the past couple of years and holding a mirror up and making us face how we treat higher education in Pennsylvania and amplifying the dire situation the state schools are in. I was a student in the system at its 120,000-student peak. It was great. Now, a decade later, 25,000 less students. You've got to be kidding me that no one over the past few decades saw this massive decline in enrollment coming. What concerns me is looking for the future. We have to work to preserve public education, the lower costs, looking forward, not for right now, not for the past. We have to also look at the Commonwealth as a whole. We just lost another seat in Congress. We have some of the highest gas taxes in the country. The turnpike is in financial ruin. Property taxes, school taxes keep going up. The largest full-time legislature in the country. At some point, we've entered this, at some point, we have to look at rightsizing for the future. We also are in a climate of work from home or work from anywhere. Right now, Pennsylvania, we're having a difficult time retaining people here in the Commonwealth. So let's look forward to the future. I hate to say it, but this cycle of population loss, losing people, will continue if Pennsylvania doesn't make changes. The PASC and the situation that higher education finds itself in is just a piece of the problems for the Commonwealth. As a result, the state system needs to be right-sized for the future and for online education. I've thought about this. I've read the plans to the best of my ability, and right now, the best option on the table is the integration plan. I hope that the board continues to look at all options, listen to everyone involved, but at the end of the day, I have to support. I hope public education is supported and financed in an appropriate way to allow other students to continue to have the best value in education, similar to what I had, and be able to have the opportunities I've been afforded by attaining an education through the state system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next, we'll go to Elizabeth Joyce. And let me promote you as panelist, Elizabeth. And you can turn on your mic and your audio, your video, if you'd like.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, and thank you for holding this hearing. My name is Elizabeth Joyce. I'm a professor at Edinburgh University. I am against the plan to consolidate the universities, and I ask that the Board of Governors reconsider it. In 2009, Governor Corbett slashed the budget for higher education in Pennsylvania, leading to our current rank at 48th in the nation for state support for higher education. To compensate for this loss in revenue, PASC universities raised their fees. As Edinburgh University has the second-highest number of Pell Grant recipients, and as the catchment area surrounding the university has a 16% poverty rate, many students could no longer afford to attend college at all. Our universities are built on the promise of higher education for lower-income students. How will the consolidation serve this potential student population? The consolidation rests on the technology of the multimodal classroom, essential if universities 150 miles apart from each other are to be joined. This technology is perfectly suited for adult learners, like the teacher earning a credential to become a school principal, but it is ill-suited to the vulnerable Pell Grant recipient. Imperfect as it is, this technology made it possible for our students to pursue their studies in spite of the global catastrophe of the pandemic. This technology also gave me access to the students' home lives, so that I could see many who did not have the benefits of the privacy or quiet necessary for study. I saw students having to babysit younger siblings or their own children during class, and students who did not have access to computers or adequate internet connections, including some who were writing term papers on their personal phones. But this isn't just a question of technology. It's also a question of culture. For in attending college, these students are breaking away from the culture of their families and accessing a culture of the middle class. In order to launch themselves into this new culture, they need to be a part of it physically, making friends with other equally ambitious peers, and being exposed to models of that culture. In order to launch these students into the middle class, rather than isolating them and splitting them apart from each other, I suggest free or very reduced tuition for Pell Grant recipients and fully face-to-face university experiences for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will go to Laura Tornaman. Just promote you to panelist, Laura, so you can turn on your mic and your video. Great. Good morning.
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity. I am Laura Tornerman. I'm a historian at Cal U. In my 24th year, I'm also a master's-level student at Clarion. And I want to focus today on the process, because we face an accelerated timeline and a lack of preparation for consolidation that I believe cannot yield good results. I believe we need to slow the process down. Things that needed to be done before we embrace consolidation have
Sorry about that, Laura. Hold on, let me bring you back, and let me ask you to restart. A little glitch there. One second. Sorry about that. Let's start from the top.
Now you've experienced my worst COVID teaching nightmare. When you rose blank, and everyone's gone, and you're not sure. And I can start a little bit in and saying, what I'm focusing on today is process and our accelerated timeline, because I don't think it's going to yield a good result. And I believe we need to slow down. As you know, at the most recent meeting of the BOG to discuss public feedback, it was announced that we're just now doing an economic impact study, and that we're just now considering a survey of students statewide during the summer, when our students are the least focused on universities. But I can speak best to what I know, and that's the curricular process in the West. We've been told here in the West that we need new programs and courses, new curriculum, to be settled this summer in order to get that information to students hoping to come in 2022. It's only fair for people who are looking at the school to know what we're offering. And yet, we still haven't heard about the side letter determining a curricular process for a newly combined university, a process that, once created, will need time to deliberate and pass general education, hundreds of programs, and thousands of courses. And I've served on curriculum at Cal U for many years, and I can tell you, even passing a program or two in a meeting is a tremendous achievement. This is a process that's going to take a massive amount of time and effort, but we can't start because the agreement isn't in place. We don't want a process to be slapped ash. We want to use this opportunity to update and improve our curriculum. Rushing will mean missing that opportunity for really substantial modernization and change. I know there are a lot of good people doing good, hard work, and I believe we could all benefit from some sort of collaboration and some sort of systemness. But we're not prepared for this consolidation. We do not have in place the things necessary to move the process ahead in a timely manner, and a rushed job benefits no one. I believe we need to slow down and have time to process information and to deliberate and create a better outcome for us all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lauren. Again, apologies for that glitch. Before we go on to our next speaker, just a reminder that we have a couple who have pre-registered, and if you're on now, please raise your hand. Kate Canazie, Jocelyn Looney, Ty Marks, and Margaret Irvin. So next, we'll go to Sheila. And let me make you a panelist. You can start your audio and video whenever you like.
Good morning.
Good morning. We can hear you. Great.
Can you see me?
No, but we can hear you.
Okay, good morning. I am concerned about the closure. One reason being, there's an illiteracy problem in our society today, in our public school system. And I'm speaking as a former substitute teacher. To close an institution is mind-boggling. There was a need for these 14 universities. What has changed to force consolidation? Consolidation will eventually lead to closure. We need these institutions open. We need to encourage education, not close it. Online learning from personal experience, it's not good. You lose that engagement which is needed, especially in smaller institutions. I received my first degree from a community college, and I had that one-on-one. When I articulated to university, I took an online course. I almost failed because I needed that one-on-one interaction. We do not need to close these institutions. We need to encourage them. And we need to consider this. Consider this. Where are we headed? We're spending more money for corrections and less in education. It should be reversed. We need to encourage education. Keep these institutions open. They're needed. The need has not changed. Education has changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. And next, we'll go to Margaret. Let me promote you, Margaret. And you can start your audio and video whenever you like. Good morning. Good to see you again.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the space to speak today. I appreciate it. My name is Margaret Irvin. I'm a professor at Westchester University. And yes, I can tell a story like many of my colleagues. When I started teaching at Westchester University in 2003, a student at WCU could work their way through college with little debt if they commuted. So yes, of course, it is true. We have lost significant ground, leaving us nearly at the bottom of funding of states in the United States with public higher education systems. Drastic financial support for the system is needed. However, this plan will not address the financial needs of the system. Rather, the consolidation amounts to a gutting of the state system. Universities are not houseplants. They don't grow back fuller when you cut them. There are many creative proposals for supporting affordability for students, such as the Nellie Blye scholarships. It is legislative action such as this that would support the system. Finally, I would support and echo my colleagues who have very eloquently noted that online education, which is a central piece of this plan, would not work for our students, and online modalities are likely to chase students away, putting the system into a further downward spiral. And thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Margaret. All right. And so what we'll do is, we'll ask anyone, I've run through the people who have pre-registered, so if anyone else would like to make a comment, just click the Raise Hand feature, and I'll call on you in the order in which they come in. And again, if Kate Canazie, Jocelyn Looney, Ty Marks, if you're on, go ahead and raise your hand, too, and we'll make sure we call on you. So we will start with Wendy, and I will make you a panelist, so you can turn your mic on and turn your audio on, Wendy. You're good to go.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I am Wendy Lindley. I'm a 30-year veteran in the philosophy department at Bloom. I have seen many things over my 30 years at Bloom, including the 2009 gutting of state system funding, the decline, the rise and the decline in student enrollment, the effort that myself and my colleagues have made, that was just immense over the course of the pandemic. I actually find the consolidation particularly disturbing that we're taking this route during a pandemic, where the burden on professors, on staff, on students, on our communities, the places where we live, is already particularly great, just managing education during this catastrophe, during this crisis. And so I would certainly be in favor of slowing down considerably. But I also wanted to say this. I am a product of a state university, University of Colorado. I'm also the product of private education. I went and did all of my graduate work at Marquette in Wisconsin. But I wanted to go back to teaching at a state school 30 years ago, because I believe profoundly in the value of public education. And what I see happening here, and what my students see clearly, without any sort of prompting from me, is that the consolidation plan effectively demotes them to second-class students. One student put it to me in almost exactly these words. He said, you know, it feels like the private UPenn, for example, Duquesne, are intended for the children of the wealthy, who will become our bosses, because our families aren't wealthy. And we can only afford to go to a school that is going to put most of our classes online, and that appears to value us as workers, but does not value us as citizens. There's a world of difference between a worker and a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next, we'll go to Greg. And Greg, you are free to turn your mic and video on.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Okay, my name is Greg Zimmerman. I am the department chair at Bloomsburg of the Department of Chemistry and Biochemistry. And I wanted to point out that I am a product of the PASC system, graduated from Millersville, as did my wife. My three sons have all attended PASC schools and graduated both from Millersville and Bloomsburg. And I think one of my biggest concerns is that, first of all, as a service department to a lot of the medical profession, the students that come here, as well as nursing, as well as researchers that go into the biochemistry area, who do the research and do things to fight against the pandemic, I have a lot of concerns, because we are a small department, and we service students that are headed in a very critical area of need for the Commonwealth. And my big concern has to do with the fact that we do have lower-enrolled upper-division classes, like just our upper-division classes, which provide critical skills for our students to move into the industrial world. And specifically, I'm concerned very much about the online courses, because I have anecdotal information from my colleagues and my own experience in teaching that the students just do not like online courses. I've seen numbers printed in our local paper here, and I'm wondering if PASC has done a survey of the students as to their likes or dislikes of the online courses, because I, as other people have expressed already, I think that going to online courses is a colossal mistake and will take Bloomsburg, as well as the other universities, down a very bad road in terms of enrollment, plus the fact that you just can't do online labs. And if you think that you can, you are seriously diluted. So if you've published, or if you have any information like that, for full disclosure, I think that you need to let that known to everyone. The other big thing about the online courses is that I've seen a lot of cheating. As department chair, I unfortunately get involved in that kind of thing, and it doesn't matter if you put in Examity or these lockdown browsers. It's much easier to cheat, and that is just a really serious problem that I've seen an uprising. It takes a lot more huts, but to cheat face-to-face, although students will still do it, but I just wanted to I just wanted to register my concerns about the online nature of the proposed consolidation. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And next we will go to Naj. And while Naj is coming on, just a reminder to anyone who may have joined late. If you'd like to ask a question, just click the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And we'll call on you in the order in which they come in. So Naj, you can start your video and audio when you like.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Loud and clear.
Um, oh, first, my name is Najee.
I'm sorry.
It's fine. So I graduated from Westchester University in December of twenty nineteen. I know my camera is off, but for reference, I am a Black femme student. And the reason I'm pointing that out is because I think that it's very interesting that a lot of the reason for this whole Pashi redesign is based on enrollment. But enrollment fails when you also don't pay it to your students. So if you are going to merge six schools into essentially two universities, are you actually continuing, are you going to work for those students that you're then putting together? Or are you going to continue to let the same problems fester on and not address the real issues? Like systemic racism and oppression in these universities that are often predominantly white, that hinder and harm the education of low income students as well as students of color? Are you going to address poverty in these schools? Where I personally have friends, I learned of other classmates who were deciding if they could pay their bill, if they could attend class, or if they could buy food. Are you going to address those kinds of issues? I noticed that Westchester University isn't a part of this plan. And I'm pretty sure that's because there would be a lot of outrage. So instead, it looks like you chose smaller universities that probably wouldn't get as much flag for it. Another problem with my, with this consolidation plan is that you said about a thousand faculty and staff were consulted, but we have over ninety thousand students and thousands and thousands of faculty and staff. So you only consulted about one percent. So how was that really representative of what the system really wants? Also, this panel, I don't see anybody that is fully, fully represented of the people that this is going to impact most. I see a bunch of masculine people and people that look white to me. And so if we are.
Najee, I think you've muted yourself.
Sorry about that. Um, what was the last thing that?
You'd said you don't see a lot of people who look like you.
Yes, I don't see a lot of people on this panel that are going to be most impacted by this merger. I don't see people of color, I don't see enough feminine identified people or people that may be femme. I cannot say who does and does not identify. But, and I'm pretty sure that these are not low income people that are representing what the, what the system needs. And I can say that because oftentimes when big decisions are being made, like at Westchester University, it wasn't necessarily the poor students or the students who needed better representation that were being supported. To do this consolidation is going to hinder and harm so many people's educations. That is, it's very interesting that online schooling wasn't, wasn't possible when people needed it for accessibility reasons. But now it's this big idea, even though it's going to harm and hinder so many students that have learning issues already. So if you're not going to address the actual issues and needs of students, what are you really doing with this consolidation plan? Other than further endangering the Pashi system?
Thank you, Najee. Next we'll go to Roger. And we promote you Roger to a panelist, and you can turn on your audio and video if you like.
I think I'm connected now, so.
I'm clear.
Uh, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Roger Wilbert. I received my bachelor's in mathematics from Clarion University. My master's in mathematics education from Millersville University. And I am currently an associate professor at Edinburgh University. I am proud product and employee of the state system. I first want to recognize that there is a need for change. And there are indeed some benefits from sharing services between universities. However, the pace that we are moving to consolidate universities is too fast, especially during a pandemic. And I respectfully ask the Board of Governors to oppose, or at the very least delay, the plan for consolidation. Long lasting major decisions about curriculum, services and university structures are being made in haste based on a plan that hasn't even been approved yet. I feel that our university administration and managers are sending a message as if the plan has already been approved, which begs the question, what else is being presented as a done deal? It seems that so many of us had to turn our attention to consolidation, frankly, out of fear of what our jobs, curriculum and university will look like and not out of support of the plan. Instead. We were supposed to be staying focused on our current duties, on teaching remotely, maintaining our physical and mental health during the pandemic. We just haven't had enough time to get all of our ducks in a row. Are these the conditions under which we are making decisions about the future of our state season? State system reasonable, out of fear, haste, and during a pandemic when we're frequently working in isolation? June is Pride Month, but for a different reason. It has given me, though, an opportunity to reflect on what I'm proud about. I take a lot of pride in my work, my courses, the way I portray myself to my local community about Edinburgh. I am proud to work at Edinburgh University. My university and the state, and the state system are great, but this plan does not make it greater. The plan is something that I currently am not proud of. Let's slow down and let's do more reflection on lasting effects so that we don't have regrets. Perhaps we could consider a pilot before we get in too deep. So once again, I ask that the Board of Governors oppose, or at the very least, delay this plan for consolidation. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Roger. Next we'll be going to Tom. And Tom, while you join, just a reminder to anyone who's joined late. If you do want to ask a question, just click the raise hand feature and we will call you in the order in which you appear. So Tom, you are welcome to start whenever you like. Your audio is a little muted, Tom. There you go. Oh, can still barely hear you. It's coming in and out. Dan, are you hearing him? Okay. It's kind of in and out, in and out. Are you able to do it without the headphone, maybe? Yeah, we can't hear you, Tom.
Okay.
Oh. Keep talking.
Okay.
Oh. You, you keep coming in and out. We're not, we're not picking up your audio. If you want to work on that, and then I can come back to you. Okay.
Alright.
Thanks. It might be just me going with your headset. Let's go to Lynn, and then we will come back to Tom. So Lynn Langley.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, and I'm trying to figure out, this is one of my problems with technology here. I'm trying to figure out how to get my video on.
There should be a start video. Got it, lower left hand corner.
I want you to see me.
There you go.
Hi, everybody, I'm Lynn Langley. I've been in California, Pennsylvania all my life. I live here, I work here. I absolutely love my university, and I'm going to get emotional because of that. I had notes for this, and I kind of crumpled them and threw them away because I want you to hear from my heart that I am against this plan. I am against this plan for my students, for my colleagues, and for my university. And my town. Our town is going to suffer drastically. The most important thing, though, is our students. We have a lot of students that are in remote sections, they cannot get on Zoom. I'm going to be sixty in November. I have been an adjunct instructor at California University of Pennsylvania for thirty years. I went to California Elementary School in Nos Hall. They call me and have done articles on me. I am California mom. I live, sleep, eat and breathe California University in black and red. All of my degrees are from California. My sons both went to California and graduated with their degrees. My mom graduated with her degrees. My dad had a thirty year career here at California University. I beseech you to please at least put the brakes on. Think what you're going to be doing to our students that don't have good access to online. I've been teaching for two full semesters now on Zoom. We had mental health days. Our administration is behind us one hundred percent as we teach. Our administration is behind our students one hundred percent. They wanted us to take time to have mental health days. We did that. I had students reach out and say, please, meet us face to face. We are going to open up again in the fall face to face. That's going to be an important move for us. As California mom. Please. Hear, hear me. I'm willing to talk to any of you individually, whatever needs to be done. Thank you for listening and thank you for taking this time.
Thank you, Lynn. And Tom, if you want to try your audio again, we can.
Okay, is it coming through now?
Yes.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you very much. So let me see, I wanted to. Get off a full screen here. Okay, thank you for the opportunity here to talk to you and. Um, I just wanted to say that I believe if you want to really encourage students, give them more opportunities, as is stated as the goal of the plan, and keep the schools going into the future for a long time. That what should be done is to start doing what should have started thirty years ago. And that is to push in the legislature for funding for the state schools to go back to the level of funding that we had when the system began. And to do what you can to guarantee that students are not graduating with large amounts of debt. Allow them to be on campuses where they can become involved in programs, in activities, in student organizations, student faculty organizations, form close relationships with advisors and professors who can offer them recommendation and so much opportunity outside of class. When I was teaching, I'm retired now, but when I was teaching, I always emphasized to students, it's what you do outside of class as well that counts. You know, you go for internships, you, you present on academic panels. And at IUP, we did a lot to offer students, you know, low pressure opportunities to present their work at on campus panels for both graduates and undergraduates. I think that if you can offer these opportunities, allow students to come and become part of the, the culture, a part of the institution and the community at an affordable price as the system was always meant to be, that this would be a great alternative for our working class students throughout the state, many of whom are still going to be the first people from their families to ever come to a university. And again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Next we're going to go to Seth. Seth, you can turn on your audio and video when you like.
If there are other people, I can, I can wait.
No, you're fine. Go ahead. We have others, but we'll go in order.
Okay. Okay, so I want to join everybody else that's spoken so far and thanking you for the FaceTime to be able to say these directly to you. This is a super helpful thing for us, and I think, so I want to be as clear as possible about this. I oppose the plan very strongly at this point. And the reason why is because it doesn't, as other people have pointed out, solve the problems that are the kind of fundamental problems we all agree have put us where we are. We pass the plan tomorrow, it doesn't generate more funding for the system. We pass the plan tomorrow, it doesn't change the financial situation of our students. It doesn't help us recruit students who are potential, you know, who potentially join the system from other places. It doesn't solve any of those problems, right? There's a kind of, like, at best for me, a kind of, if we build it, they will come, hopefulness that's at work here. And that's just too big of a gamble to take on the kind of commitment that this proposal is asking us all to take on here. I guess I've been feeling for, you know, I've been following this really closely since it started. I've read every single press release and report that came out of the, out of the chancellor's office. I've watched every Board of Governors meeting that I could see on video. I've read every newspaper story I could get my eyes on. And I'm hearing two kind of like, two different rationales for this that I'm having a hard time reconciling with each other. One of which is that it's an emergency and we have to do something. The other of which is that this is a very slow, thoughtful, deliberative, organic process that's going to develop the best possible system. It's hard for me to understand how those can both, how we can be, how we can be designing triage and how we can be designing a kind of utopian version of what the system might be at the same time. So I'll put it this way, for the sake of time. I don't think that this plan does what's necessary to solve the problems of the system. I'm afraid, as other people have said, that it's distracting us from, 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 from being able to do that. Even if you disagree, I just don't think it solves those problems. And if there is a version of this plan that does solve those problems, we haven't seen it yet, and that's why we need to wait. Right? So please, so, so, so if you, so if the vote on the fifteenth happens and it's a yes or no vote, I'm very strongly asking you to vote no. If there's a possibility to say, you know what, if we spend some more time actually thinking about this, maybe we can figure out how to fill in. Maybe we can figure out how to orchestrate it so that it solves the actual bigger systemic problems that are happening here. I am more than open minded to those possibilities and would love to see what that looks like. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Seth. And next we'll go to William, William Cahoon. And you can turn on your audio and video whenever you like. We see you. Yeah, you're still on mute, though, William.
Thank you. Took me a little bit. Bit to join as a panelist and then get things turned on. Well, I am a professor at Bloomsburg University in the mathematics and computer science and what we actually call it mathematical and digital sciences. We also have digital forensics. And I actually signed up to speak tomorrow because tomorrow is about the Northeastern Group Plan. And I will still speak tomorrow about what I wanted to say, but since there seemed to be at one point a lack of speakers, I thought I would make a comment, which is, I have a concern that there needs to be more time for this plan to be evaluated and for the public to have the possibility to comment on the plan. There needs to be more time to demonstrate if this plan is going to work financially. I don't know that enough has been done to show that the plan will work financially and whether it will work educationally. I did serve on one of the sub, subgroups, and I'm happy to do that, to, to look into the possibilities. I don't consider that an endorsement of the plan itself. But you notice that most of the people speaking here have been faculty. The faculty are, you know, very aware of what's going on. There are very few students who are aware that today is a day when they could make comments. I went to the Bloomsburg University site yesterday to get information about how to access this meeting. And I didn't see anything on the Bloomsburg University website about it. Obviously, you have it on the Pashi website, but I think few students are going to go there. So, you know, maybe you've notified the students by email, I don't know. But I know when I asked students, you know, some students asked me in class, what's going on with this? And very few students had any idea really what was going on. So I think there needs to be more time for students to get educated. I was at a meeting yesterday with community members and many of them said, this is the first we've heard about this. So I realized, you know, all of us that are involved in this have been very involved in it for several months, know a lot about it. But I think a lot of our questions haven't been answered and certainly there hasn't been enough opportunity for students and community members to know about it. So I would, I would ask that at the very least you you delay taking action on this until there can be more study of how this is going to work, both financially and educationally. I, I, I share the concerns that some other people have mentioned about teaching online. I've done that during the pandemic and it, it worked okay, but not as well as in person. And so I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Great. Thank you, William. Next, we will go to Joyce. And I see Kate Canazzy join and Kate, I know you also pre-registered. So if you still want to speak, just click raise hand and I'll make sure I get you into the queue. So let's go to Joyce. And give you a chance to get connected. All right, Joyce, go for it.
Good morning. Thank you for listening to my comments. My name is Joyce Overly and I'm an associate professor of chemistry at Clarion University. And I'm the president of the Clarion chapter of ABSG. I've been at the university for 23 years. I'm also an alumna of IUP. And that has made all the difference in the path of my life. I grew up as a rural, blue collar kid and now I live a comfortable middle class lifestyle. And I have a professional career that I just absolutely love. I have many concerns about the integration plan. First of all, I believe that if the plan is approved, there will be enormous disruption and harm to our students. And there will be, and their local communities. And the payoff will not be worth, worth the squeeze, I think, as Chancellor Greenstein has said. Opportunities for students will be restricted, not expanded, with many programs being eliminated or available only through online or hybrid learning. Now, it's true that there are students, adult learners in particular, who prefer online classes or at least appreciate their convenience. But most of my students over the past year have been extremely unhappy with taking classes remotely. And I know that their learning has not been what it should be. Their parents are similarly unhappy. I know this because my daughter attends one of the non-integrating PASHI universities. And I've spoken with many other parents about the situation. Another concern is that to date, we've not seen an updated economic impact study, which is concerning because the economic impact of job losses or fewer students in town will, will decimate, could potentially decimate these small communities in which our universities are housed. And then you turn to what's to be gained. So if we do this, what are we, what, what are we going to gain by it? Well, the plan says that tuition will not be reduced. So that's right off the table at the top. Savings for students are expected to come from things like dual enrollment, living at home, work, study. And those are things students can already do. And that we can work on expanding because yes, we have some, have challenges and we can work on expanding those things. Oops, I need to put my comments back on top here. We can work on expanding those things, but we don't need consolidation to do it. Based on the most recent program array, like I said, the opportunities for students to choose a major that fits their interests, goals and abilities will be reduced, at least in the West. And the plan will have a net cost of more than $11 million over five years. It doesn't make sense to me to spend any of the state system's limited finances on consolidation. We can reap many of the benefits touted in the plan by working closely together without going to this full consolidation route. One model that I would recommend considering is a consortium approach like that used by Bryn Mawr, Swarthmore and Haverford. Now, those are certainly private schools. They're very close together. So it's a different situation. But I don't see why we couldn't use some distance learning to accomplish this without fully integrating the universities. At any rate, at this point, I think the entire idea should be shelved or at the very least halted until its effects have been more completely investigated. Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. And next we'll go to Oya Hala. I wanted to promote you to panelist. And you can start your microphone and video whenever you like.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Steve Gonzalez. I have been raising the, the public schools, the PA public schools. And in this case, I think I bring a unique perspective because I've been in business, in the business world for 20 years. And I did hear one person in support of this plan on this call. And that was really, though, I was interested in see what, where their vantage point was, where they were coming from. The only thing I got from was they kept saying the word right size. And being in business for 20 years, almost 20 years, I know what right size means. I'm here to explain what that means. That means to cut. In the business world is a weasel word that we use to explain we're going to cut something, to decimate something. And then the next logical question is why? Why would PASHI want to decimate something? I think it falls in an ideology that goes way back into, we want these universities run like a business. And that's scary. We want profitable schools. We want schools that, 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 that don't spend money, that make money. And what does that mean? How does that work out? Well, that, that creates online environments because now you can get one teacher with 100 kids or whatever it is. And then you get an environment like this where we're in this big room with a looming presence that's staring off into the void, us, the, the peons and you, the powerful. And, and what control do we have? We get our two minutes, we get to say something and, and you know, luck, maybe our mics turned on, maybe it's not. Is that engaging? Is that what we want? Is that the future that we want these kids to be involved in? Because this is what's going to be. This is, these are the steps that you're taking. Is to create an environment like this where it's not engaging. You, you didn't even get Najee's name, right? I mean, how are we supposed to be involved? Poor Tom, he couldn't stay on. I mean, this is just, and this is the future that the kids are going to get. And for what reason? The number one reason is because money, cutting money, not, not having the, the, the expenses within the state system. And honestly, my last thing I want to say is that that logic that, that we need to run things like a business was used back in 2016. Back when people were voting for president, they decided, okay, I'm going to go with the guy who, who is a business person. And I want them to run the government nationally. That was the decision that was made. That was, that was the logic in so many people's minds was to pick nationally. For President of the United States, I want someone that's going to run this country like a business and look how that ended up. Look how that country's done. Now my ask is just, can we please, we please take steps away from running colleges like businesses? Thank you.
Next, Steve. And next we'll go to Nick Marcel. Promote you, Nick. And you should be able to turn your mic and video on now.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me and see me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Your video is a little wonky, but we can hear you pretty good.
Yeah, totally good. Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Nick Marcel. I'm a Westchester University alum and current grad student in the Higher Education Policy and Student Affairs Program. I'm against this plan. I think it should be voted no. I think people should delay it. I currently, right now, am cutting grass and listening into this public comment section. These public comments are not accessible. I, like, I'm stopping my job to make a comment. I think that there needs to be more hearings that people want, if, if you all want us to be heard. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I graduated from a state institution with about like 15 to like $17,000 in debt. And, and, and I'm a current grad student. And that's why I'm cutting grass. It's because we don't demand more funding for higher education. This plan doesn't do anything but just like the last person said, cut, right size. We're not trying to demand more from the legislature. We're not trying to do anything to save public higher education. We are cutting, just like I'm cutting this grass. It's absurd. It's saddening. Okay? And talking about accessibility, all right? Yeah, wow, this is accessible for me to, you know, get on the Zoom. But just like the last person said, there are issues in terms of broadband. There are issues in terms of your connection. Is it really engaging? I've been listening. I haven't been able to see everyone because I've had my phone in my pocket. In addition, when you talk about accessibility like this, you're basically making a two-tiered system. It's like me saying I have the same accessibility to healthcare as Jeff Bezos. Yeah, I do, but he has a lot more money. So he can attend this, you know, institution as a residential college. What we need to be doing is actually demanding more state support, not settling for what we have and trying to find workarounds that don't even provide real savings. Over five years, what? It makes maybe two thirds, not even of the cost of this plan? It, it, it's absurd. I don't know. Just please, I urge you to vote no. I urge you to make more public comment hearings. That way I can actually speak instead of being, working, literally working to pay for my PASHI education. And trying to make a comment. If you want students to be heard, maybe give us a little bit of money, like it, it's not hard. Get more state support. Thank you for listening. I know I'm going to be on again to actually make better comments because I'm somewhat out of breath, cutting grass, just like you were cutting public higher education. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next we'll go to Kate Canazzy. Move YouTube panelists, Kate, so you can turn on your audio and video. Great.
Good morning. I wasn't sure if you could see me switch, switch either. I am a double alum of Westchester University. Currently I am a grad student as well. And I am also, I also graduated undergrad at Westchester University. We are very concerned as students about this plan because it's extremely unclear what happens to the student end of this situation. Like there isn't any delineated process. If you are already enrolled, will your classes still be on the same campus? If you have to go to this hybrid model and you are one of the universities that is further away, will you actually be able to get to your hybrid, like your, your in-person learning experience? Because how much further will you now have to travel? We're really concerned about the student debt. Pennsylvania has one of the highest student debt ratios in the entire country. If you, I already lived over an hour from Westchester University. Our school is not up for consolidation. It's almost equidistant because of traffic for me to travel to Bloomsburg. If you move my classes to Bloomsburg though, because of the distance, right, of these consolidations, I won't have childcare. So you're going to force people to move closer to places that already have completely unaffordable housing or a dearth of unaffordable housing when their resources are already stretched thin. Right? Because resource pantries, which are on, like in my brain, very hard to understand, food banks, right, for university students are only so big. If you continue to have students travel to other sections of the state to be able to get to their in-person learning, they're going to be more taxed. Also, it's going to create a dearth of internships because students have to go even further outside of their communities. It's going to leave pockets of under engagement of young people in the very areas of the state that are already most economically disadvantaged. It's not going to add to the retention of graduates, which is essentially what you need to build your population and to keep those parts of the state going. There's very little numbers in this plan. So we're extremely unclear as to how this saves money or what it's going to do to us as students in the long term that often take classes in the summer at different campuses that are closer to home or closer to where our internships are. So we're hoping that you at least delay this plan until it's explained significantly more clearly so that students know what they're signing up for and taking loans out for. My time has expired, but we, the students would love to participate more in this process so that we can make an informed decision as we attempt to come to PASHI schools and take out loans to continue our education here.
Thanks, Kate. And next we'll go to Kimberly. And as we go to Kimberly, I'll just remind anyone who may have joined late. If you'd like to ask, or sorry, if you'd like to make a comment, just click the raise hand feature and we will call on you. So next we'll go to Kimberly. We can see you.
Good morning.
And we can hear you. Go for it.
Quick apologies. I'm in my car right now. I'm about to leave for work. I just wanted to hop on. First of all, I just graduated from Edinburgh University with my masters. I also have a bachelor's from Edinburgh in journalism. And I just sort of wanted to talk about a negative effect that this university has already seen about this plan. Edinburgh University recently touted that our journalism program is one of the best in the country, yet it just cut its best professor in the department because of everything that's going on with the retention. And I just want to bring that up because that person was the advisor for The Spectator, which is the campus newspaper. And I was the graduate assistant for that. Generally, I would graduate, I wouldn't think about it for another second. But The Spectator has been around the university for over 100 years. And nobody has any idea what's going to happen to it. And I just feel like that's an incredibly negative effect that everybody needs to be aware of. It's already happening because of the integration discussions and plans. It's not just going to affect our education as students. And I'm surprised to not see many students here, although it did take me a long time to find out how to get into this Zoom. It's going to affect those programs as well that are getting us jobs. And I think that if you're consciously okay with voting yes on this plan as it is right now, then you really need to reevaluate your values and what you think about this state system. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. And next we'll go to Dana. A moment to connect and you're able to turn on your mic and video when you can.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay?
Loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Dana Morrison. I'm a faculty member at Westchester University and a proud alumni of Westchester University. I'll be speaking more formally later today at the 4:30 meeting. But I had a quick question and I'm not sure if you are taking questions or anything. But I'm wondering today, where are the board of governors at this meeting? I'm actually not seeing them as listening. I understand that it's being recorded and possibly they could listen to that later. But I'm wondering how the public can know that they are being held accountable to hear us today.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other questions? And by the way, just logistical note, board members are joined via Zoom and many are watching via YouTube. But since they're not speaking today, we don't have them as panelists. All right. If there are no, are there any other, let me ask if there are any other folks who'd like to make a comment? You do just click the raise hand feature. Fred, we will go to Fred and then Mark. Okay. Just one second. Me, connect you, Fred. And you can turn on your audio and video when you are able.
Okay, um, hear me, see me. Perfect.
Loud and clear.
All right. So both of my parents graduated from Cal U. I graduated from Cal U. I'm currently on the alumni board at Cal U. I think an issue with communication is, is present. So I, I didn't hear about this until maybe an hour ago from a friend who works at Cal U. So I have plenty of connections at Cal and it still took me pretty much day of to find out that this was happening. My parents' story, both first time graduates. Mom came out dead free, my dad with only a few thousand dollars. They're both. Um, they're both successful, lived in Pennsylvania, contributed back to the community. That's the story we want, right? But that's not the story we get anymore due to the reallocation of higher education budgets, that type of thing. Um, I went to Cal, same thing, uh, you know, a pretty good job. I'm working in the field I want to work in. I I'm a proud graduate of the Earth Science Department where I worked in GIS and Emergency Management. And I fear that these kind of specialized niche skills will kind of fall to the wayside when we move online, as we consolidate. And I think that's the real gem of going to Cal U. You know, I I had pretty good grades. I went to one of the best high schools in the country. I could have gone where I wanted to. But I wanted to go to Cal because the professionals were passionate. They were good at what they did. And I had time to get that face-to-face interaction, right? So um I know someone mentioned it earlier, that the friend kind of friendly interactions that you get at these state colleges is very important. Um, and my last piece real quick is kind of this competitiveness to going to a majority online model. Um, I think, you know, the the education environment, industry is shifting in general, so you see more of this Coursera, Udemy, MIT Open Courseware, um, you know, looking, how are we going to compete with them? Because if we're moving to this majority online model, we're not competing with local universities in Western Pennsylvania. We're competing with the planet. Um, so I I think we really have to step up our game in that that sense. And I'm finally, you know, in that same industry model, we're looking at like Googles and Facebooks that are opening and kind of standing up their own education departments. And and you know, what, what is the sell for me to go to college for four years at Cal U versus getting a tech certification at Google in six months? So I I think these are all things that we really have to consider. And I really think the the benefit of going to a Cal U or or a Pennsylvania state school is that face-to-face friendly interaction and those specialized education skill sets. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. And our next speaker is Mark. And when you get connected, Mark, feel free to turn on your mic and video. Mark, if you're able to turn on your audio video.
I'm really sorry.
Right, you're good. We can hear you.
Uh, Mark Rimple from Westchester University, chapter president, outgoing and twenty-plus-year faculty member. Uh, full professor. I, the timing of this plan couldn't be worse. Uh, you know, I know that there's a lot of sort of, you know, worry about uh long-range savings and things like that. And I know that we have financial issues. Uh, I will say that this is a time when we were all working ourselves to the bone, to death. Not only um trying to get our students the best education possible. And anyone who has taught online for real, as we have, understands that it's more than twice as much work to do that. So at the same time that we're doing that and the students are buried in work and completely stressed out, we had to be dealing with this. So I, what I guess we could call it shared governance, but this uh, you know, pattern of having to try and negotiate our way into something that works. And, you know, when we had our negotiations for the last contract, I was very impressed with the way that um the chancellor and the board of the system were very much listening to the experts on the ground. I don't feel that right now. I feel like the experts on the ground are being listened to in as much as they're being told they can be listened to. Uh, I find that this idea that distance ed is going to be the way that our students want to move forward is completely wrong-headed. It does not match the reality on the ground. If you've been in the classroom, as I have, online, you know that students have been stressed out of their gourds. They're not looking to come back online. They're looking to come back in person. So, you know, relying on sort of consolidating and then making a lot of things distant, or at least a good proportion of an education distance is wrong-headed. And as the last speaker said, there are people who will clean our clock on that level, and those credits will go there. Um, the savings does not seem to be clear to me. It costs more than it saves in the near term. And a five-year or more timeframe is unrealistic. We all saw what happened a bunch of years ago when we got a new governor who just out of nowhere cut, tried to cut our budgets fifty percent. You can't make a a financial plan for three years and still even get that to make sense. So the timeframe is unrealistic. Uh, it seems like the wrong battle. The battle should be with the state legislature to get the right kind of funding. That's not what we're doing here. We're um living in a scarcity situation and we're trying to um attack the problem by, you know, putting the stress on the faculty and the students as opposed to putting the stress on the legislature where it properly belongs. Um, I think this is a poverty of imagination. I think that as a system, we could be working much better with government and persuading rather than, you know, uh, rolling over and trying to figure out how to always do more with less. It doesn't work. It hasn't worked for decades. And uh, I just think this is the wrong plan for now. I think it's uh really abusing our faculty and students when it comes down to what we need time for, which is to think and to grow and to learn and do our best work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, any final commenters? Feel free to click the raise hand feature. Otherwise, we will. Okay, we'll go to Rob. And Rob, you can activate your audio when you get a chance. We can see you.
Okay, good morning. Um, my name is Rob Pra. I'm an alumnus of California University of Pennsylvania. And I'm actually a staff member, so I took off uh some time this morning to be with you. I've been in, been in the Army for over twenty years, uh, so I have a lot of experience in planning operations and a lot of things at 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 higher levels of uh operation and above the tactical level, which is basically where we're at on our campuses. So I've been reviewing some of this stuff and I felt I felt obligated as an alumnus and officer to to express some of my thoughts here. So before I get started, um, there's two questions that I have and rhetorically speaking here. Why is the plan still moving forward without NCAA approval? And and I think when I speak to a lot of friends and when I speak to a lot of community members, that's the big question. Uh, unless I've missed it, um, you know, I actually just jumped on here a little bit ago. But that's a question a lot of people have, and there's a lot of rumors flying around out there in the local communities and on our campuses. We all know that. Uh, middle states, you know, that that hasn't been approved. And I believe speaking, you know, I don't know specifically for other institutions, but that's a question that a lot of faculty have. And those are two what I consider showstoppers. So unless I miss that, I I think that, at least from the Board of Governors and the Chancellor's Office, they should put that out to kind of ease some of those concerns. Now, I'll be very clear. I want this plan to succeed. I want nothing more than a more affordable opportunity for our students. I want nothing more for our system as a whole to succeed. But I do have some concerns with the plan, and I'll be very brief here. So it's, so in the Army, when we do planning, we use a process. It's called the Military Decision Making Process. And if there's any Army veterans or anybody that served on any planning staffs, you're familiar with that. The most important step is the mission analysis phase. That's step number two. When we go through that process, we we have inputs, we have uh do-outs from staff sections, we have staff estimates. We include all of our staff in that plan. We don't just work in silos and various subgroups and working groups. There are a lot of faculty and staff who I believe in some of my conversations that are working in silos. The the report that was published was just put together. There was, there was no actual analysis done from those subgroups working to talk, you know, across uh different areas. I think that there was an an opportunity to really make this program a little bit better. This process, in my opinion, is not deliberate. We have identified what our course of action will be, and that was months ago. And then what we did was we went straight on to actually execute that. And and many times during my career, when we we talk about planning, uh, we skip over some of these steps. We never war-gamed the different courses of actions. Did we ever wait certain criteria, certain criteria? We didn't war-game because we only had one course of action. Why haven't our veterans been involved in this process, our families, their families? And, you know, I I think that what we need to do is do a better job of including our students, especially during a pandemic. I, for one, I am almost done here. I, for one, just returned to campus last month. Last month, I have not had any military and veteran students on our campus. And I think we're doing a disservice for seven to eleven percent of our population to not be involved in this process. So could you imagine playing in a military operation when everyone's on leave? I know I can't, and I'm just asking the Board of Governors and everyone involved in this process to pump the brakes a little bit, take a step back, do the deliberate staff work that needs to be done to make this plan successful. At this point, I'm urging the Board of Governors to please pump the brakes and take a step back. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, for your comments, and thank you for your service. Um, are there any others who'd like to make comments? So just click the raise hand button. All right, if not, then we will go to closing, Madam Chair. Thank you all. Oh, you're on mute, Cindy.
You're, you're right. I am on mute. Sorry about that. I I really want to thank everybody who has participated today. I want you to know uh that we are listening. We have heard um what you have to say. Uh, I I think a lot of, a lot of the comments we think we've addressed and clearly we haven't. So it is our imperative, that's on us. It it's up to um the the Board and the System Office to better communicate um information that uh I I think addresses a lot of the concerns that were raised today. So I'm I'm going to put that on us. I'm going to take that. Dale Bashar, you know, Dan, Randy, we all have to uh, we have to figure out what we need to do to do a better job to um communicate a lot of this information, and and I promise you that we will be doing that. Um, I I also just wanted to comment that, um, I think Randy already said it, but um with regard to the the Board, the being concerned, the Board is uh extremely concerned. And as Randy said, uh, most are participating um uh via YouTube, so you don't necessarily see their faces here. But uh, rest assured, uh, there, there's nothing we care about more. And this is uh even as a politically appointed Board completely caring with one concern in mind topmost, and that's our students um and this system and how we can contribute to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So those are my remarks. Um, Dan, did you want to have any closing remarks?
Uh, actually, just to thank folks and to echo your sentiments, uh, Cindy, uh, this is super helpful. Uh, I think it does point to uh our need to communicate more effectively, and we'll continue to do that. To, I mean, I think uh many of these issues are addressed in various places, but they obviously have to land. Uh, and that's important. Um, I think the other, uh, the other thing, and this will help us, I think, inform the Board as it goes into its deliberations over the next month, um, you know, by addressing these um issues of clarity and points of confusion. I think that will also help us inform the Board so we can make the best possible decision in the interest of the students and the communities that we serve and the, you know, many faculty and staff that are so important to our enterprise. So thank you.
All right, and then that will uh end our hearing, Madam Chair.
Very good. Well, thank you all very much again. There are three more hearings coming up. You're invited uh back to listen. Or if you have new comments.